Evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone back for a new school year. All members of the Board are present. Rebecca Streimer is present. She is joining us remotely. So I think we'll see her face at some point, but she is with us also tonight. We are going to start off a little differently. Do most of you have a paper agenda in front of you? You will see on the first page, paragraph 1.1, "The Call to Order," and below it is our equity statement. And we are going to read this together. So just like we do in church. I'll start, and if y'all could join in. "In Asheville City Schools, we are committed to equity and anti-racist policies for all students and staff to learn and thrive. We recognize that our positions come with power, responsibility, and public service for the entire ACS community. We will model our commitment to equity through our practices and decisions. During this meeting, we invite a pause if harm has taken place, a moment to name the harm, and space to practice repair." Thank you. As I mentioned, all boards, all members of the Board are present, so we do have a quorum. And at this time is there a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, the agenda is approved, and at this time, I will call on Ms. Prochet to talk about our student releases.
Good evening, Board. Welcome back to another fantastic start of school year, 2526. And what you have before you is a continuum of this school year of student releases, and we're starting at line 43 all the way down to 59 for releases.
Tanya, we don't have numbers, so can you just give us a sense of what page that'll be in?
Would be the first, the last name.
To the Board, I think the way this new expanded reporting is working, you'll see final school board approval date, and then if you basically scroll down until you don't see that anymore, from there forward is what we are going to be approving. And certainly, if there are any questions, otherwise, just looking for consensus about whether this could go on the consent agenda next Monday. That looks good, okay. Thank you, Tanya. Next, Ms. Kim Robinson with our student code of success.
Good evening, Board. So today, this evening, we have sort of changed the student, the code of student success for Asheville City Schools. In the past, it's been vague as far as how we code, how we discipline our students as far as behavior goes and expectations. This time, it's a little lengthy. However, it is supposed to provide more clarity on how the process goes and provides... So when students are being written up, it would be based more on factual information than assumptions. So I know you haven't had much time to review it, but do you all have any questions?
Thank you, Kim. This is a lot of work. I haven't had much time to review it, but I have scrolled through it a little bit. One question that I have, I mean, the concern that I've heard from staff is that the same behaviors were being treated very differently depending on the AP or even the teacher. I appreciate, therefore, trying to get more consistency. Question is, if I look at this and I see different levels, sometimes levels three, four, and five, or one, two, maybe there's a one, two, and three probably, for the same conduct, I didn't scroll down enough to see, is there a specific, is there specific guidance as to which of those it should be? Because that's... And I do appreciate that culpability varies depending on... But anyway, is there a way for... Is it standardized within that? Does that make sense?
Yes, and we do, at the end of the 11 expectations, we do have various levels of what those suggested consequences should be. And I, let me add that level ones and twos are supposed to be handled by teachers themselves, and three, levels three, four, and five are more administrative. However, level one, two, they can counselor-administrative support as well.
How does it, how does one determine if it's the same behavior, whether something is a level one, two, or three, when all three are available?
They have different descriptions of each one. So the various responses begin on page 36.
Okay.
The system itself is designed to be a progressive model, and that's why you see various levels for one event. That's what it's called, and they're in fractions, but in...
Okay, so first, so I guess I'm looking at, I'm trying to understand what the, how a teacher or a staff member is to know if they have, for example, insubordinate behavior, and I have, I don't remember, but I want to say that's one and two, or one through three. I see under one that there's a parentheses that says first through third instances. Is that, I mean, I'm trying to figure out how, because that's where I think the rub has been. There have always been consequences and then a range of possible, I mean, behaviors and a range of possible consequences. And I'm wondering how this helps narrow it.
Yeah, so again, we want teachers to be able to provide the consequences themselves for the level one and two. And like I said, it is a progressive model. So the first three instances, we're hoping that a teacher be able to take the suggestive responses to handle them themselves prior to handing it over to an administrator or student support staff on campus. Is that answering your question?
Not really, but I appreciate the effort. I mean, in all honesty, I think what I'm asking is, I understand the teachers handle one and two, but what is the differentiation between two and three, for example? How is a teacher to know? And then, I don't know if you, you may not be able to answer that question, that's okay. I'm sure you have. My real more important question is, how are we going to train the teachers so that they know? Because I think what you're seeing is, some teachers are having a lot of write-ups, and some teachers are having very few, and the same kids are in those classrooms engaging in the same behaviors. So it just breeds inconsistency both of behavior and it... There's probably something wrong on both ends of that equation, if that makes sense. And so I'm just wondering, at least, what's the training going to be so that a teacher knows, this is what looks, insubordination looks like, and this is what it looks... You know, if you get three instances, we expect you to do X, have one of these responses. If you have, you know, once we get to four through six, does that make sense?
Yeah, so you're really talking about repetitive behaviors.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I'm not talking about once.
Yeah, and so with that being said, teachers will be writing up minors, and there'll be a narrative, and for them to be able to write... They won't be writing major referrals as they have in the past. They'll be creating a narrative in infinite campus, and then administrators will be the ones who will, once that repetitive behavior continues, the administrator will be the one who will be determining what that event is.
Okay, and so just, and I'm sorry to dominate the questioning.
No, keep going.
So does, so do they know, like, do they write them up even for the first, second, and third instances that they're going to be handling?
It'll be, yes, they put that, also, they're able to put that into infinite campuses.
Put that in, and then, and then the next question is, I've just, I only, and I don't know if this is really accurate or not, but I understand that there are even differences among administrators and how they handle things. And so is there going to be training for administrators so they have? I just really believe that if we don't have consistent responses, we don't have a classroom that's very helpful for teachers or students.
I agree.
I know.
And yes, we will be providing training. I've already told administrators, I spoke with some teachers last year, and I think they're going to get tired of seeing my face and time is facing my team because we're going to be in there, and especially August and September, we're going to be working with school administrators and their staff on how to ensure that this is a equitable process, equitable process for them and our students.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I'll just add a couple of things. So as I've been talking with principals over the summer, what I've asked them to do is develop, like, the code of student success is a list of our expectations for students, how we process administrative referrals. It doesn't speak to as much as the local school processes and procedures for addressing classroom disruptions, the things that a teacher, we'd expect a teacher to deal with, which level one and partially level two. Sort of ask the principals to do is with their team, their leadership team, develop what their local school process is going to be. So the first time a student in a classroom does X, not follow direction, here's the consequence that a teacher would give. And they've got to create a progressive consequence list so that the first time a kid does something in a classroom, they're not getting sent to the administrator. So we're creating a little more school ownership over the initial teacher process. And the reason that Kim is talking about, like, teachers won't write referrals is because teachers don't, to be honest, don't really need to know what these rules are. They need to know what are their local school rules, what are their expectations for them in the classroom for their students, and here's how we manage when students aren't meeting our expectations. So the teachers are going to need to spend some time with their administrators during pre-planning to say, okay, what are these norms and expectations that we have as a school for student conduct in our classroom? And then what are we going to do to a point where our stu, where the teachers then say, I've done these four steps, the student continues to be disruptive in my classroom, I'm really not sure what to do next? And then that conversation with administrator would move that student on to, next time this happens, you know, you're going to get a major referral instead of just having a teacher consequence. And then the other piece of this is, when you see things that are like a level two and level three, the first time a student's written up, it's going to be a level two. And then you're also going to take the severity of the incident. So you could have, you know, a student, a student fight that is very, very disruptive, or you could have a student fight that looks a little more like, hey, pushing and shoving in the hallway. So those would be very, of course, different levels of response for the students and their consequence level. So even within the rule, there is going to be variation. So you have to have some of that flexibility. And if a student is chronically doing the same rule over and over, you're going to move up the level of consequence for that student in particular. One addition that we added to this code is a specific rule for students that are chronically disrupting the classroom so that we have a little more clear, very consistent procedures in place so that our teachers know, if you have a student that is continuously dangerous or disrupting the learning environment, we can't stand for that. So we'll have some additional steps that we'll be taking with students and their families and the school to help support those students that are those, that can be chronically disruptive in the classroom. And we always, as a principal, I knew it was like five students that took almost all of my time as an administrator managing their student behavior. So when we have very clear expectations for students that are observable and not a lot of, hey, I think this is what that was, I think that will also help our administrators manage these more consistently across the board. So some of the training that's going to happen for our administrators is they'll see and unpack this code first on Thursday, and then we'll have standard-setting opportunities for our administrators throughout the school year. So we'll start pulling, like, referrals that have been written, same rule, but much different consequences, and we'll start level-setting those so that there is more consistency as we move throughout the school year.
I just want to, George, I know you had questions too, but just to follow up on this particular thing, I just wanted to ask about the ease of implementation. And as a teacher myself, I recognize that it is often very challenging to log instances, especially if it's like a level one or two. And so I just wanted to ask if that's something that's going to be sustainable for our staff.
Yeah, I definitely think so. I'm a, and I've just, I've said this before, I'm a big fan of paper referrals. I wish that we would just say, forget about putting this in, because when you have a paper referral, you can do it anywhere, but you've got to have your computer or something to enter stuff in when it's tied to a process or a system in your computer. So that's not, that was not a favor, a favorable response when I suggested that, which is fine. So, you know, with everything, it's a process, there's going to be a learning curve. We do know that. We also have a brand-new student information system, so it's learning with all that. So we're just going to have to, you know, go as we can and support our teachers and our principals with the implementation with whatever they've asked for. Thank you.
I got the point from George down there. Thank you, George. So I'm going to lean on the rest of you when we get into policies. This is really what I did the deep dive in in preparing for today, is reading through all of this. Ms. Robinson, I have sent you probably about 100 questions and edits. It's in your email. Thank you very much for inviting me to do that when we spoke earlier. But look, thinking about Amy's question and the readability, I think there's a lot in here that's really transformational, and this is excellent and exciting. I am wondering whether, or suggesting, rather, that the progressive support framework perhaps go before all of the expectations because it really lays out that incremental philosophy. And it's something that a parent can really understand and wrap their head around instead of faced with a wall of something that more looks like accusations. And this, the progressive nature of it becomes very clear as soon as you start with that section. And then maybe follow that with possibly the Expectations 11 section, which is what happens with repeat, because that kind of ties in with the progressive framework. And then get into your Expectations 1 to 10, which is, it looks like it's a lot of state referral codes or state logging, and I don't know how much flexibility we've got with editing that or adding to it. So I want to thank you for doing all that work. I did have one big question about the appeals process. On page 45, it says that if it is a shorter-term or temporary suspension or something else, I can't remember, it's three days to appeal once the decision is received, and then, and it has to be appealed by the student. But if it's a long-term, it's five days to appeal, and it can be appealed by the student or the parent or guardian. And then if it's a assignment to an alternative learning, it can't be appealed at all. And so I'm wondering if we can provide more time and allow parents and guardians to advocate for their students in each instance. Not that every appeal would be successful, but just to give that possibility.
The appeals process is in policy, state policy. That's not a Asheville City Schools policy. It's a generous statute.
So as far as allowing extra time, then we would go to our attorney and ask if we're allowed to do that?
Yes, the appeal for student disciplinary matters is handled through statute and Board policy, so it would, we'd need to review both of those for consistency.
If I could, and I know others have questions, mine is more organizational, Ms. Robinson. Have we had a code of success in the past?
Always.
The concept we've had before?
Yes.
And your team has put together a very comprehensive overhaul of that, which is what we have in front of us. And it is on our agenda for approval next week. And I'm looking for some clarity for Board members also to understand if, for example, this, reading this code of success has brought to Board members' attention that there's policies they have questions or concerns about. That's something we could take up later, but right now, it's the policy, and it's mentioned in this code of success. And obviously, the point of this evening is to hear questions and get feedback, and you and your team do what you will with that. I don't know that you're going to be able to respond to everything you hear from all of us, but I guess I'm looking for some clarity, if this comes back to us next week as the best, what we have to start the school year with, and we would vote on it. As issues arise, you all would be revising this code of conduct, or does it not get? I guess I'm trying to help the Board understand what we'd be voting on next week and how it, this coming year, the whole district will live into this and learn from it and improve upon itself so that we understand we're not stuck with this for five years. I think that's what I'm asking.
And it is a statement in there stating that as issues arise, we reserve the right to revise and add or take away, take out.
And according to Board Policy 4303, the superintendent is asked to review the code of conduct annually with the Board. And I realize I put it in there for approval, but it's really for information. It's just an informational item. The Board doesn't approve the actual code. You've designated the development and implementation of that to the superintendent, but I, the policy does say I should review this annually with the Board.
So then, to clarify, today, what you're, we're doing is you're reviewing it with us, and it's a brand-new, comprehensive code of success, and we're excited about it, as I know you guys are. So again, I know other Board members had questions, which I think you all should take as suggestions and input and to take back with you. Okay, thank you for that context.
Pepe, if I could ask, your recommendations and statements that you made, are those in your notes that you shared as far as the order of the...
The order suggestions, I didn't put in the email, but I can. And I also, before the meeting, said, any suggestions that I have carry zero weight because it's not a Board decision. So I'm clear on that. It's just, you know...
You did state that earlier, yes. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I would like to thank, it was just more than my student services leads who supported with this. We work with teachers, instructional assistants, administrators as well, bus drivers, everyone. We ensure, we made sure we did not get the student voices. However, we do have student recommendations that we will still be meeting with and talking with them about it.
Okay, question, oh, you good? Might, this might hit you, it might hit Maggie also. Hey, how much info are we pushing out, reminding the parents on the cell phone policy? I mean, are we going to put out signs? Are we going to make sure that the parents totally understand? Because once, once they get written up, what's going to be part of the policy? And we're talking about the cell phone and the watches also. Anything that has to do with a phone, correct? And the parents really has to understand that because if we, if we're going to push it, we're going to push it, we're going to follow the order, correct?
Yeah, we've already started pushing out some public service announcements online to let parents know this is the new law in the state. And then now working with principals on what can they do locally as they do their welcome-back-to-school presentations and information for their parents. And it is going to be a little bit of a learning curve for our parents, but I think, you know, I think they'll get used to it pretty quickly.
Well, could we put signs out in neighborhoods, just like we did 2Cent, saying that the policy is so, I mean, it's going to be a, if the parents doesn't buy into this, we're going to have a big problem here with their phone policy according to the state, and the teachers are going to have a problem trying to deal with this.
Well, remember last year, we severely limited cell phones at the high school. We were already significantly limiting cellphone usage to middle school. So I think last year, we really did the big lift with limiting cellphone use at the high school. Students were putting their cell phones in the lockers at the start of every period. They had them during transitions and lunch. But during the class time, students already did not have their cell phones. And in middle school, they are told to put them away and in their locker. The change this year is that the phones have to be off. They can't just be on silent. So there is a little bit more training, and we're happy to put signs up around the schools and share, you know, robocalls with our parents, things to make sure they're aware of this. But yeah, we still have a little bit of work to do to make sure that we've done a very well-rounded communication.
Can we use the backside of a 2Cent board?
It's 2Cent on both sides, Jesse.
I'm going to let poor George talk.
So this is going to sound like a gotcha question, it's not. But the question is, who is this for? Who is this for? This 45-page document, who is it for?
It's really for administrators.
Okay.
Yeah, this is not a code, this is not a thing that you would give to, I mean, yes, it's our documents, and quote, "Parents have to read it," but it is not the, like, one that we would give them to really process and understand. That comes through presentations that the principals do with their students every year, information they share with their parents. So administrators don't sit down and go with over this 45-page document. They create a presentation and meet with their students and review it with the students.
Thank you, because one of the first things I heard was this was going to simplify things. And a 45-page document, to me, and having read through it, it does not feel simple to me. It feels extremely complex. So I'm glad to hear that it's not something we're going to be sending home with every family to have to review, and have to know, like, go down. I mean, like, I mean, by the time I got to page 12, my eyes were crossed, right? I also want to, I understand that, anyway, I'm not going to editorialize this. I'm really challenged by the fact that the word we're using is expectations, and most of these are negative. When I was getting my degree, my master's in education and all of my training, like, when I posted my own classroom rules on the wall, I was told to avoid, as much as I could, that, don't do this, don't do that, don't do this, you know, to make it a positive thing coming into that classroom. The fact that the first, however many pages, is, is, no, 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 is really, it just kind of like, something's sitting in me with that. And so I actually really appreciate, Pepe, what you said, this idea, and I, you know, I know it's just an individual idea, but at the very top of this document, it talks about what discipline is. It's a definition of discipline. And it's not until page 41 where we get a paragraph that says, "Behavior is often expression of unmet need or skill, et cetera," right? That, to me... That, to me, is the, if this is for administrators to try to figure out policies and processes that best help staff and students best meet the demands of the classroom, this, to me, is the grounding conversation. That behavior is often an expression of unmet needs, et cetera. To start it off with, "Discipline is a training," it feels very like, so I just want to acknowledge that. I know it's just me, I know we don't have to vote for this, but it honestly feels kind of gross. And so that's why I first asked, like, who's it for? And so anyway, I just wanted to, I didn't really have a question other than who is it for. It's just a comment I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Board members, we're good. Just to clarify, we didn't amend our agenda, but it is as if 2.2, this updated student code of success, would have fallen under discussion items because it will not be back before us next week, just to clarify. But thank you, Ms. Robinson, and all the folks who worked on this. We are hopeful that it will work, and we will reap the rewards. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Maggie and April to talk about the feasibility study.
A few months ago, I can't remember what month it was, we brought the board three options for a feasibility study as responses to the RFP that we put out. And as we heard the presentations and the feedback from the board, went back to the company that kind of met the most of our checkboxes and asked them if they could review some of the data and reports that we've already invested in and determine if that would take off a significant amount of the cost of the feasibility study. And they were able to send that back for us with a significant decrease. So remember also, the feasibility study is part of our long-range strategic planning process. We need to look at a comprehensive look at all of our facilities, make a determination based on hard data, what is the best way forward for maintaining our buildings? We have some that are 100 years old. We have some that are 20 years old. We need to look at how our student enrollment could potentially change up or down over time. We need to understand, we've got, right now, central services spread across three campuses. So we need to really take a look at long-term sustainability and within the best financial position for the school district and determine where we need to look forward to invest funds in capital projects and schools and where potentially we can reduce our footprint in certain areas. So do we need to have three buildings operating central services? Or is there an opportunity, looking ahead, at restructuring, some kind of configuration where we're down to one central services building? So those are just some of the options that we, not even some of the options. I don't even know if that's what they'll come up with. But we do need to take a comprehensive look at all of our facilities, taking into consideration enrollment, future projections for enrollment, and age of our buildings, and cost of renovation, cost of upkeep, and consider all those, as well as an in-depth community input gathering so that we know what our community is thinking and what they are considering and what they would like to see as it relates to facilities. So that is the updated proposal for the board. And any questions that you have?
I am, I have big questions and little questions. I'm wondering what the missing text is on page two in the first sentence. Would love to know that at some point. I'm interested in how MPS will validate the data of the demographic forecast. And then I'm also thinking from an economics perspective, how will MPS account for the fee that we place on out-of-district families, including families that have worked and lived and owned property in the school district, contributing to the ACS tax base? I remember our CFO, I'm reading my notes. I remember our CFO reported $160,000 in revenue from out-of-district fees. I'm wondering what the impact is on our projected enrollment with those fees, without those fees. And I'm wondering if there's going to be anybody, either with this group or elsewhere, that can look from an economics perspective what the impact would be on our enrollment if we curtailed fees, if we eliminated fees for out-of-district students. And so that's, that's like a big concept thing that I'm not seeing yet. I don't want to get us into a situation where we make assumptions and we aren't looking thoroughly at what our options are, and they kind of like direct us into a corner. I think our discussions on preschool priorities may also impact the work. I'm thinking that we will get more out of the study after the board has those conversations than if we were to start this process right now. And of course, there's the sticker shock of $350,000 approximately. And then I see there's a part two that isn't in the bid. So those are, that's where I'm coming from.
So just as we, once we get an approved vendor, there will be several meetings to set up the explicit scopes of work. So some of your questions about tuition-paying students versus non and, you know, waiving that, those can be things that they can put into their consideration. And we can decide, do we, you know, is that something the board wants to look at overall? Or is that something the board is not really interested in exploring? So those will be part of that really detailed scope of work once there is a contract signed. And then I see the overall amount as $243,000?
Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate that.
Yep.
And do we have any idea, is that part two that's listed in there, is that the part that they cut from their original bid? Or is that something that's always been separate?
That's something that's always been separate. As you know, the Ashville High School campus and the Sulset Campus has gone through extensive renovations and HVAC systems. And so that was eliminated because it would kind of cut those engineering costs down. But we do know that there might be some elements we might have to go back and look at. So thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
So I am unaware of the missing text. So if you'll see me afterwards, I'll see if I can fix that for you.
I didn't notice that either.
Yeah, it's like on, I noticed it. It's a with and then a blank. Is that what we're talking about, Pepe?
Yeah, page two.
Yeah, it says with, and then there's a space and a period. So it's just an incomplete thought.
And I just want to know.
April, can you follow up with the?
We'll take care of that, yes, ma'am.
I think if we're going to ask about waiving fees or reducing them, we may as well, if we're talking about economics, ask about increasing as well. You know, just consider all the different options.
Could I chime in just procedurally? In theory, not in theory, in reality, we need to approve a contract with a vendor to start this work. And I know there's going to be more questions. I'm just trying to get our process. And we believe there's a fee on the first page about the $243,000. And essentially, what we would be doing at this stage is saying, yes, we want to contract with this entity to do this work at this price. But then, we will have further conversations with that particular entity about the scope of the work. And there will be time for the board to decide, and I'm just going to make these up as examples. It's a real priority for us to look at enrollment and look at the fees and look at the things that have been said tonight. That would be something, as a board, we could say, we want that to be. And we would all have to understand, just to be clear, that the more we add to the scope of the work, likely the fees would increase. So at some point, the fees that are quoted here are for the work outlined. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right, Maggie. But you'll have board feedback on the scope of the work that's coming.
Yes, and also just, I want to also make a point of clarification that this expense for this will come out of the capital budget.
Okay, so I didn't need to cut anybody off. I just, I think it's fine if we want to offer up things we'd like the study to look at. That is a conversation we will have when we work on the scope of work. And we all need to understand that may affect the scope of fees if we keep throwing in things.
But to be clear, the key components are set. So there are some elements we can dig deeper and better understand and be more holistic. But like, for example, the demographic projection, like, they took the data from the capacity study and enrollment study and use that to launch the work. They'll do site visits. We're going to have a team that's with representation from administration. We'll ask the board to participate. We'll ask teachers to participate. So there's multiple layers. But the buckets of the work are already defined.
Sarah, may I ask a question?
Yes, please. Can Rebecca go? Okay, go ahead, Rebecca.
What April just said, the concept of the buckets are defined in another, a separate proposal, not this one. Another group acknowledged being able to look at things like in schools that have spaces that are not being fully utilized, that there could be options to partner with other public entities. Maybe the county could use some of that space. So instead of closing a school, we'd be able to learn about options, what it would take. Do you think that's also sort of baked into what this could include?
Yes, ma'am, I think that would fall under the feasibility and operational planning. We can, as we get deeper into that work, we can uplift that.
Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, Jessie.
We did a study about a couple of years ago, a comprehensive facility study, on trying to figure out how well these studies are when we about ready to do this one here with the comprehensive study. Right now, at this study, on this graph, it does have a 25, 26 school year, 14,336 students approximately. Are we even close to that right now?
That was an example for their report. That wasn't our data.
This, it wasn't?
No, that was an example they pulled to show, to show us how they demonstrated.
How they do this?
Correct, but that's not our data.
It's not our data. But if I go back and look at our data, will it be anywhere? I mean, I know these studies are important, but I would just like to know how accurate and if, if it shows that we did that study a couple of years ago and it has a number on it with the amount of students of this year. I'd just like to know how close would it be?
I'll pull for you our data this year. The company that we used Cooperative Strategies for our enrollment projection, last year, they were off by 10 students. So they under-projected us 10 students. We were actually enrolled 10 more students district-wide. So I find that there are always, the company Cooperative Strategies that has done our enrollment study has a very accurate record of student enrollment.
And one last question. Besides buildings, what else is capital funds used for? Is there?
Any, like, grounds, infrastructural support, water lines, gas lines, structural things. We're working with the county on another project right now. It's athletic fields, athletic houses, anything operational.
Do you know the amount we have in that budget?
That's a great question. I can get back to you with that exact amount. And don't forget, we also have capital commission funds too that support some of our projects. So it's a variable that shifts. Well, don't forget emergencies too, which is next on the agenda.
Heidi? No, I'm only joking.
Not going to throw my friends under the bus.
So Dr. Furman, you mentioned that this is part of something that's needed for strategic planning. Is it, can we still do strategic planning without it? And what would strategic planning look like if we didn't have it?
Yeah, we can, we can do strategic planning without it. But for the operational part of the strategic planning, it'll be like tying, you know, putting on a blindfold, spinning yourself around in 10 circles and trying to hit a target. So it is a very essential piece to help sure, to help us make sure that when we do the facilities part of the strategic plan, that we have accurate, up-to-date data. And also with our budgeting process, it will very much help us understand our assets and where we need to focus assets when it comes to capital projects and potentially looking at how we might be able to adjust our footprint.
Thank you.
I'm not, Pepe, I know you have a question, but I was going to share with the board at the end of our meeting, just in terms of board updates. But Rebecca and I, and Rob Elliott, and Amy Churchill, Maggie, Rob Jackson, recently met with Avril Pinder and the county, the chair and the vice chair of the county commission. And we're going to start to meet quarterly. But there is a lot of pressure on us to do such a study and to look at these issues. The county is getting the same pressure and different than we are, but they've got other avenues that they're looking at it. So I just wanted to name that we're doing this because we're being asked to do it and look at these issues. So just wanted to offer that.
A small nugget, but a really important one that I think we should uplift is that this also helps us prepare for the classrooms of the future and how we can really enhance the educational environment for our kids as things are moving and we're trying to keep up with AI and what it looks like. And in my career, it's changed so much. So this is another opportunity for us to grow in a different capacity.
I'll say that it does make a difference for me that it's coming from capital funds and hopefully from the school capital commission. But we will see.
That won't happen.
Fingers crossed. Is this, was this the middle bidder or the top bidder in the?
It's the middle.
It's the middle bidder. So we're, we're missing some of those bells and whistles that were with that top bidder.
Yeah, they had a lot of, like, bells and whistles on their, like, reporting dashboard that I just didn't think we really would need because, like, that's going to, that's going to bring with it continual data entry. So to maintain those, it was like, it's a stamp in time unless we have someone continually updating the dashboard and putting the data in. And I was just like, we don't have the capacity to keep a dashboard like that updated and on ongoing basis. So that kind of is one of the reasons I was like, we don't need that flashy dashboard.
Thank you, board. I think my thought, subject to your input, is given the size and importance of this feasibility study recommendation, that it would not go on the consent agenda, but be on the agenda next week for a vote on its own. And if you all, after today, think of things, additional questions or input that you have, please send it to Maggie and we can get more information, you know, at the start of the meeting next week. But at this time, I'm going to move on. You're good, Pepe, have anything else on this one? Okay. At this time, we're going to go to Kim Deckent to talk about contracts and MOUs.
So you have a list of, a long, three-page list of contracts that are information-only, MOUs, and continuing contracts. But you'll notice at the top, there is one contract that you will, we will have to get your approval for because it exceeds the threshold. And that's the train contract for the high school. And I think the cover sheets are like helpful in giving you a brief summary of the MOUs and contracts. So I think that saves some time, too.
Please, questions?
Couple of questions, if I could, Kim. One, I feel like we just did the baseball field lighting. So why does that need to be replaced already?
So I'm going to let April speak to that.
Yeah, April probably knows the answer.
And some of the hurdles that they've experienced.
Okay, thank you.
Originally, the company that we had acquired to do this work had a difficult time meeting timelines and obligations. And for circumstances that I don't quite understand, they were unable to complete the job. We had to pivot from using helicopters to set the lights to using cranes and be very sensitive to how we treat the turf field. And it became a little bit more complex. And so we worked with companies that we have a relationship with. And we, so we had to pivot and did not end with that contractor. And we went with a more local to finish the job.
Did we recoup any or lose any?
Anna can answer that question.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will provide you guys, I will provide you guys update on this situation in closed session.
Thank you. Another question I had, just curiosity, I did see, and I'm not putting my eyes on it right now, but some training for staff, I mean, it kind of goes back to my earlier question. Am I right that there are funds in here for training staff on kind of behavior challenges? Let me put it differently, supporting kids who need more support, but helping instructors and staff?
So are you referring to the Crisis Prevention Institute?
That's one of them. And then I feel like there were others. It was like, it was a bunch of training, which I was happy to see, but I was curious about that.
Was it AccuTrain?
No, it wasn't having. Anyway, is that the idea though, behind the reframing? I mean, is this helping train teachers and administrators?
So I'm going to defer to Tama on that so she can speak to the training that they have in place.
Yeah, so this year, we'll have several different options for, to support schools in that idea of what behavior is and what it's communicating and then what our response is going to be. We have, through the Crisis Prevention Institute, we have training that is on de-escalation, regulation, trauma-informed, person-centered training. We have safe supportive measures, those kinds of things, verbal de-escalation. We also have reframing behavior, which we'll be developing teams, support teams at each of the elementary schools for reframing behavior. And those teams will get specialized training so that they can, in a flexible, however it works at the school and whatever that school needs format, provide that training at those schools. I'll facilitate those teams to also work with them on how to coach in their own school setting. And then for our secondary, we're focusing mostly on William Randolph right now, but we do have some slots open for the secondary administrative teams and student services teams to also get trained in responsibility-centered discipline so that they can help with supporting their staff at their own schools at the secondary level as well.
Thank you, Tama. Are those new, are these kind of new or is this just a continuation of what we've had before?
There's been a hit or miss. There've been some people in the district who've gone to some of these trainings, but there's been no systematic way of providing that support. And just the realization that, you know, teachers who are stressed out and they're, you know, feel overwhelmed in their classroom, might not feel like they can leave to go to a training. We really needed to come up with a way that would develop that system of support within the school so that the support is there every day, all day.
Okay, great. So this is some sort of a new way of, because I saw them and I was like, yay! I hope this is what I think it is, but it sounds like it probably is. Something that's maybe more robust than we've had in the past.
Be some things that are kind of rolled into their crew meetings. There'll be some focus at their staff meetings, but we'll also have some additional optional things. So if a staff member's like, you know, I need a little bit more in this area, then we'll have some of those options for them.
Thank you.
May I follow up on that?
Yes.
In the past, one of the hurdles for training like that has been funding classified staff to be able to stay after. So do we have any stipends or any funding that will enable our classified staff to participate along with our certified staff?
So the way that we have it set up, the reason that we will have those teams and some of the classified staff will be on the teams as well, we have some of those who are really skilled and talented in de-escalation and helping students regulate, and we need them as well. So principals are choosing who in their schools need that skillset and need some additional training and who have access to their staff members to provide things during their planning times, before school, after school, during school, going in and observing in classrooms or coaching in different situations. We want to be able to equip the teams at the schools to be able to deliver that support in a way that doesn't require someone to stay after school for several hours and, you know, require a stipend because we just don't have funding for that usually, right? It is a thing that you'd have to plan for ahead of time and oftentimes, you don't know exactly what is going to happen when you, you know, get a group of kids together. You might get a new kid who you didn't know before. We want to make sure that the support is there. And then we also have our student support, our student services team at the district level who can come in and add additional support to those teams as well. And the, probably the best support that I've ever given a teacher is actually in her classroom or his classroom or their classroom. Because if you take someone out in a controlled environment and you're giving some training and then you say, okay, go back and do that, it doesn't always transfer. If I'm, you know, going into a classroom in the midst of what's happening and being able to coach them through that based on some information that we, you know, have gone over and that I've equipped them with beforehand, that really is on-the-job training, which is really a great way to support.
And to add to that, at the end of last, this past school year, we did work with classified staff the whole last week after school let out on various behavior support trainings where they became certified in certain areas. And also, we do have someone coming in who will be providing coaching in the classroom, providing 16 sessions. So we're going to be working with schools to see which teachers would prefer to have someone come in and work with them on coaching sessions.
I'm just hoping that if principals feel like they need a little bit of funding for classified staff to participate in professional development, that the principals are able to allocate or ask for those funds.
We usually work that out with the principal and either, sometimes principals do, they'll say, I'll pay for it if you'll just, you know, come and support this person. And that's fine. It doesn't, it's not the same at every school.
Sure.
You know, the funding that's set aside for different things, you know, different priorities. We'll work with them either way. Either if you have funding or if you don't have funding, we're still going to do the work and we're going to make sure that it happens.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions about the contracts for information only or specifically the train contract, which will be on the consent agenda next week? Okay, thank you very much.
So next, you have policies for second read. These came to you in June for first read and do you have any questions about those that you didn't get to ask the last time?
As I recall from the last meeting, we didn't have a lot of questions about these, but now is the time. Are you all comfortable with these being on the consent agenda next week? Okay.
At this time, yes.
Okay. The second read policies will go on the consent agenda. Mostly for my own purposes, just to summarize before we move on, the student releases and the contracts and the second read policies are going on the consent agenda. The feasibility study will be voted on, separate from consent, and the student code of success is not being voted on. So just clarifying all that. At this time, we're going to move to discussion items and the first is budget updates.
Yeah, so we do have some information and update on the budget. So some general updates are, and I'll let Heidi go into more detail here, is that the federal funds were released. So we do have the federal funds being downloaded. The state did pass, like they passed it right as she was working on this memo. So we've got some updates on the budget based on the mini bill that was passed. But they have set a budget with some things for teachers, but it's very minimal. I'll let Heidi kind of take, share that. The commissioners did get the local legislation approved for release of Article 39 funds to be used for the schools and operational. So Heidi's going to share some more information about that. So I'll let Heidi kind of add some of those details that came in and answer some of the questions that board members have and then we'll see what other questions you have.
Good evening, how's everybody? So no, we do not have a lot of information we would like to have right now, but right now, the local estimates are getting closer to the point that I can give you some better information by next month's meeting. We have the majority of the revenue that has been received to date. We're still working with a good many accounts payable, but those have slowed down in the last week or two, so those numbers should be much easier to discuss with you next month. And capital, the same kind of situation. We still had some ongoing projects as we always do over the summer. So we'll have some more information on that by next month. And then the Article 39 capital commission funds, we did have a virtual slash live meeting last month with Avril and her team and talking about logistics. And that's why I added that in here today, is that their intention is to try, you know, their whole intention of working with that article and the change was to try to recover from the mid-year cut we had. They gave us a slight increase this year, which would have been a true slight increase had that cut not been made, but it was a slight increase over where we ended up after the cut. So this is, this Article 39 restoration is supposed to attempt to make us whole, us in Buncombe County schools as well. And there, we talked a good bit back and forth about how that would be handled because obviously it's an interesting situation where it's not a local current expense appropriation and then it may or may not still be capital. Buncombe County Schools has some needs over and above ours for capital, FEMA recovery that they haven't received back yet, a much more dire staffing situation that they have to address. And they were adamant that they need that flexibility and they don't really want these funds identified for any specific purpose. So the county said the best way they believe they could handle it, and I honestly agree, is that basically each month, we get a report with a line about our local current expense appropriation and a line on a report about our capital appropriation and how much they're sending us, and they would add another line to give us this money on a monthly basis, much in the same manner as our other two appropriations, is how they are planning to administer that at this point in time. Now whether any of that gets adjusted or tweaked, I can let you know as we move further down the road. But that was their first run at the way to handle this blended situation we're dealing with this year. So, and then yes, I think, Sarah, you may have said something about the date of my memo versus the date of a mini bill getting launched. So what I try to do on these memos, just so when you look back, is I always date them the night of the board meeting. So that way, if you ever wonder, when did we talk about this? It's always the night of the board meeting. So every indication we had last week was there would be no budget, no mini bill because obviously they didn't even come back in session until last week. Well, lo and behold, don't you know? We end up with this mini bill that is probably the worst mini bill I've seen them actually pass. It does very little for us. I am thankful for my peers out there that are in growing districts because last year their needs were largely ignored for over half of the school year when, I think I've explained it to you before, they've moved to that funding in arrears model at the state. So that's great for those of us that definitely want to lock in when we might lose a few more kids, but those folks that were growing ended up not getting any of that funding for over six months last year, which really was a burden on them. So this mini bill did address that, so that was good news for them. What it did also is lock in the fringe benefit rates, which are very close to what we were using as our estimates. They're a big increase, but at least they're close to what we used as estimates. So that was good that we have that information now to work with. But the piece they didn't do is they didn't pass a raise for anybody. What they said we could do is implement the bump is where most people call it. Basically the step from one year to the next. If you're on a schedule, and not everyone is, so we could possibly implement a bump as a result of this legislation, which normally we cannot do because under a continuing resolution, you can't change people's pay, period. So we could do that, but there's absolutely no funding attached to that. So, yeah. So that's, to me, not extremely helpful. So right now, that would be, for example, if you were a teacher in our district this past year and you were paid, say, let's just call it $50,000 on step 10, we could move you to step 11 with, let's just arbitrarily call it $51,000. We could give you that over the course of the year, but it's not the correct step. It won't be what it ends up being if we get a raise and then we'd still have to process a raise and retro pay later anyway. And that really wreaks havoc with the payroll system besides. So we're going to have to take a hard look at that. DPI is trying to work with the legislators right now and try to explain that situation because normally what they do is they say, yes, bump, but you stay at the salary you were at last year. So I think it would be very confusing to staff to get a bump that's not the real bump and then have to go back and fix everything all over again, and not to mention the work involved in that. So like I say, I talked to Alexis Shouse today and she is definitely bringing those concerns back to the legislature because I think that was probably a good intention on their part to try to give everybody at least something at this point when they had not decided on or come to a consensus on what the raise could be. But we do not know when that will be. I think Kim's got more information in her legislative update, but right now, they're just, they have adjourned. I mean, they're only going to come back for one to three days a month possibly until the short session starts again in the spring. So we really don't have an indication on when that might change. So I wish I had better news, but as Maggie said, the good news was that at least the federal government came through and sent us those appropriations. So the CNI team can move forward with title budgets for principals and that type of thing. So that was the good news that I could share. If anyone has any questions, I would be happy to entertain those.
Heidi, I have a question about Article 39, just so I understand it. The bill passed, so the portion that would have gone to the fund that the school capital commission group manages, won't go there. It will go to the county, although held as Article 39 funds. And from that pot of money, they are going to send us the amount equivalent to what was the mid-year cut. In my mind, it's 700,000, but whatever that number was. So they're saying, okay, we're going to give you that back to make you whole and we're going to give it to you over 12 months, so we'll get 58,000 a month.
But I think, and Anna might be able to correct me on this, but I think logistically what happens is the money still goes to the capital commission, but then there's a transfer from the capital.
Okay, thank you.
Operating account.
So that's the heart of my question. So whatever our portion and the county's portion is 2-point-something million and that will be allocated on this monthly basis. If there's more than that coming in, it gets to remain with the commission then? Is that how that works? Okay. In theory.
In theory.
Okay. I just wanted clarity on that.
There's still some unknowns at this point, but I will go with in theory is.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions, board members for Heidi? We appreciate the information and do our best what you can. Let's see, at this time, we have significant legislative updates.
So while keeping up with all of the changes that are happening in Raleigh is extremely important, is very time-consuming and for any individual to keep up with it because it's been a moving target since the beginning of the summer. The first thing, and Heidi talked about this, is, you know, we were anticipating the federal funds being frozen. That was the first thing that we were hit with this summer. And then that's when General, North Carolina Attorney General Jeff Jackson filed a lawsuit. This is what would have potentially been impacted. And then things were moving so fast, I couldn't even list all the updates coming from DPI on giving us updates about when the money was going to be released. But we got our first one on 7/3. That's when the business department got the first thing saying the money was going to be released. And then after that, we just kept getting memos saying this part's coming, this part's coming. So thankfully, as Heidi mentioned, we are getting our federal funds, which is a huge relief. During the 2025 session, there were over 300 education-related bills that were filed. During the 2025 session, there were over 300 education-related bills that were filed at the General Assembly. 20 of those pertain to school finance, 21 were centered around compensation for teachers, and then 37 were focused on child well-being. So as Heidi mentioned, a mini budget slid in, I think that was on Thursday, it went to the governor on the first, and the only thing that, as Heidi mentioned, we're really getting, coming out of this, is that we know what the fringe benefit cost will be for the upcoming school year, but beyond that, not a lot in that mini budget. Senate Bill 375 passed, which is Harrison's Law, and some of the things coming with that law are a tighter, tougher crackdown on hazing of students, by students, also by employees. Makes it a felony now if, if you're convicted of hazing. And ironically, like, it's funny how things are added into bills that really don't sometimes connect with each other. And the other piece of that is that LEAs are going to be required to post central office salaries. Heidi and Dr. Dickerson are currently working on pulling that information together. They have been in consultation with Campbell Shatley and the School Board Association on what the expectations are for LEAs, and we have to have that posted on our website by Friday, August the 15th, and it will go underneath our finance page. House Bill 309, and this is what you were talking about earlier, this is about the reallocation of funds, which were typically used for capital projects that now are essentially being redirected to, to use to essentially balance your, balance your budget. It does talk about, you know, the, the requirement of meeting with the county commissioners and the two school districts, which I feel like is something that we do anyway. We, we've already have that in place, you meet on a regular basis, and as Sarah referenced earlier, they're eager to have those meetings on a, on a more set schedule. House Bill 378, this gives, essentially saying that you've got to be really conscientious about how you spend money on technology, which I think Matt does a great job of that already, he's very transparent with y'all about purchases. It'll just, you know, how we're spending that money, how much, you know, it costs, and keeping detailed records on that. And there's an expansion of pathways for sophomore high school students. Again, I think we're ahead of that, because, you know, we have SLSA, we have, our kids can take classes at AB Tech, we have a strong CTE program. And then also in House Bill 378 is the tuition, the increased funds made available for tuition programs, that you, if you've got a savings account for, for college, that they, creditors can't come out, come after that. And it also allows our student athletes to do the, to engage in selling, basically to companies who are, you know, want to use their image, just like college athletes. So that's been added into, into Bill 378. 928, that House Bill just extends, it's a short bill, but it allows physical therapists who are on campus to do concussion assessments, and it's just a minor change. House Bill 959, I'm sure, AKA the cellphone bill, that's probably what our kids will call it. Mary Lee has been pushing out information through our social media outlets about the bill, letting them know that this has passed, more information's going to be coming from their principals. School staff are prohibited from using TikTok on any school-issue device. We also have, you'll be expected to put a policy in place by January the 1st pertaining to stricter enforcement on cellphones. Again, Campbell Shatley has been working on getting communication out about that to us, so that will probably show up on the agenda soon, and the School Board Association is also working collaboratively with them to get that in place as well. We will have to take into consideration when looking at this cellphone, when new cellphone policy, like students with IEPs or 504 plans, there could, you know, accommodations for students who are currently being served under those. So basically, a huge overhaul of our district's technology and internet access plan is, is coming. House Bill 1012, this allocated additional funding for hurricane relief, however, this money is only set aside for LEAs who were not able to get reimbursements from either FEMA or their insurance. So this doesn't apply to us. April and Heidi have been working with FEMA and our insurance company to get reimbursed for anything that, any losses that we incurred. Senate Bill 77, if we have a student who needs to have a nurse, a school nurse services while they're with us during the day, under their IEP, parents can pick what the provide, who the provider will be. However, I spoke to Holly Sutter, and currently, we do not have any EC students who have nurse services with us during the school day. Senate Bill 118, just more, essentially providing more grace to students who have parents who are in the military, and, and allowing them additional time to get proof of residency when it comes to enrolling them in school. Senate Bill 125 gives an extension on the time you have to spend your money through school safety grants, however, there's no increase in funds, just you have a longer window to spend it. Senate Bill 442, it protects parents' rights to reject gender transition and limiting the definition of abuse and neglect. And some of the concerns with this bill is that educators may hesitate to report gender-related distress because of this bill, and there's the fear of increased risk of anxiety and isolation for our students. So this is, this is a bill that our school counselors and social workers will be looking at closely before the start of the school year on how to best serve our students. Senate Bill 429, this bill centers pretty much around increasing our policy when it comes to Delta 8, Delta 9, and THC. So I'm sure we'll see an update from the School Board Association with changes to our drug policy. Senate Bill 477 is good news. It allows students to go free of charge to state parks, historic sites, museums, the North Carolina Zoo, and state aquariums. So this is a positive bill that will definitely save us money on school field trips. Governor Stein vetoed three anti-DEI bills. The first one, 227, pertains to K-12 education, the second one pertains to higher ed, and the third pertains to state government. As you can see at the bottom, the House has not called for a vote on 227, 558, and a vote has not been called on House Bill 171, in either the House or the Senate. So these bills return to the General Assembly on October, on August 26, for a possible potential override votes. And that's, so we'll, we'll know more in August about those three. There were four calendar bills that were proposed during the long session, and none of these passed. And in talking with one of our local representatives, one of the reasons was because the summer, summer camp lobbyists have so much power and money evidently, that they're the ones who, who were kind of instrumental in blocking these. So no, no new calendar law, and we'll continue to operate under the one that we already have approved for the upcoming school year. These are some of the education bills that were vetoed by the governor, and then you can see in the, in the red, the ones that were, the veto was overridden last week. And I think it's important to note that four Democrats crossed party lines to override these votes. And so when we talk about advocacy, I think, you know, being informed and reaching out to those individuals and writing them, and to, even though they don't represent our district, they represent the state, and they represent our students, and so I think it's important for our voice to be heard, and the impact that they could potentially have on these other bills that will go back on the, for a vote on the 26th of August. So some of the impacts at the federal level, there's a new voucher program that has been established, and states have until the end of the year to decide if they're going to opt-in or not. We also saw a reduction in SNAP benefits. We, potential cuts in Title I and with students with disabilities. Medicaid is being impacted, which has an impact on our reimbursements for health services for our students with IEPs. So House Bill 87 is, got pushed through last week. It's the opt-in to the, to the federal voucher program. It went to Governor Stein on Friday. It would allow families to get a tax credit dollar for dollar up to $1,700. It would begin in 2027 if it goes into law. Based on everything I've read, I'm anticipating that Governor Stein will veto this bill, and I'm sure it will go back on for a vote. And again, it's, the, the four individuals who overrode the vetoes, one of those was a charter bill and I think a, a voucher, so there's a good chance this could be overridden, so it's important to advocate. The General Assembly will come back, as Heidi mentioned, just a few more times. They'll come back in session for two days in August, they'll come back on the 26th at noon, September for a couple of days, one day October, one day in November, one day in December, and then the short session will start back until April of, in the spring. So if a budget is going to be passed, they've, they've got a couple of days in August to, to make that decision or kick it down the road until September. So it's, again, it's important to reach out and advocate. So Mary Lee and I had the opportunity to go to, the North Carolina Association of School Administrators is doing a campaign across the state, and we were able to go to a day-long session about how to advocate for public schools. And so some of the ways to get involved, you know, follow the Public School Forum in North Carolina, Public Schools First, NC, you know, reach out to your representatives, write letters, and, you know, advocate for our, our children and public schools. We have a lot to celebrate Nashville City Schools, and we need to, to be proactive. So that concludes the legislative update for 2025.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I think, just will say to the room what I know we're all thinking, that there's a lot of harm caused by this legislation, but we appreciate your sharing it with us. Board members, do you have questions or input for?
You go ahead first, Amy.
Well, mine is just an appreciation of that picture of Coach Vet on Slide 9. That is worthy of the hallway. I just wanted to say that. I don't want to take too long, thank you very much. That is a spectacular photograph of love, lots of love in that.
What are we doing, or have we had any time to think about what we're doing in response to the Big Beautiful Bill, and what funding might be cut, and how we might support students for whom those cuts will be really impactful, students and families?
So are you speaking specifically to SNAP cuts? So
I mean, I mean, yeah, SNAP, I mean, yeah.
With SNAP, I can speak to some of the things that we have in, in place. Kim Robinson and her team have done a great job of, of keeping the resource center open and making that available to families every single Wednesday, and every single Wednesday, we have a slew of families who are carrying supplies out of there to, to get them through to the next week. Melissa and her team have done a great job of providing the hot meals, making sure we have manna bags there. Bountiful Cities comes and participates with fresh produce, so trying to fill in as many gaps as we possibly can during the summer. As Heidi mentioned, our federal funds have been released, so Shannon and her team will continue to look at like, you know, carryover funds, looking ahead to next year about potential cuts and how to start scaling back before we move into the 26, 27 school year.
And don't forget, we have free breakfast and lunch for every single student, every single day.
Yes.
Well, and the budget side of that, we need to also understand, maybe more impactful, because if those students get disqualified from those programs that were able to direct certify them for CEP, we do have a concern that it will cost us more as a local entity to pay for those free meals, but right now, we're just going to have to see how that plays out, and I hope they come up with an alternate calculation for that.
I also really appreciate, Kim, declare the specificity about which local organizations we're in partnership with and working with them. I think that's something that we don't, as a community, don't always lift up, just how we are, we have organizations embedded with us, we are embedded with, with organizations to support our families, to support our students, so thank you for that. Sorry, I'm going to, you know me, I'm kind of a policy guy, policy wonk, or whatever. For Senate Bill 442, sorry, I don't have that pulled up in front of me, the PowerPoint. It says something about limiting the definition of abuse. Can we get some clarification on that? Does that mean parents can, can decide what is defined as abuse?
So what it does is say that raising a child as their biological sex is not considered abuse, is essentially the change that's being made. So you, it, it essentially says you can't file a DSS report on the basis of a parent not acknowledging their child's gender identity.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kim. We appreciate it. At this time, we're going to move to the district work plan.
I put together a quick presentation just to kind of help us walk through this, so they're going to put that up on the screen for you. But board members, as you were coming in, we also passed out a copy of our Portrait of a Scholar for you, and it identifies five characteristics that we gathered through the strategic planning process, Phase 1, and then we have started to already build and incorporate these different characteristics into our local school improvement plan, our local school work plans, and our crew meeting templates, and it's becoming a focus as we start the school year on directing our students to what are these attributes that we're hoping our students grow into as they move through our school system. So just a couple of quick things, I'm not going to go over the work plan in detail. Hopefully you've had a chance to review it, and we, if you've got specific questions, we can talk about those. So first of all, what is a work plan? A work plan, typically it's something called usually the district or school improvement plans, but we call it a work plan because it defines the work that we are going to do and the goals that we have, and it really is a roadmap that we use throughout the year. It is not a one-and-done document, we review it continuously, monitor our progress, how are we doing on this, this is, you know, we need to invest a little more time in this, we're not quite ready to move on from that. So it is that roadmap that really outlines our work, what we're going to do, and it helps us center our focus on teaching and learning and leading. And it is the foundation of our school work plan. So as we met with principals over the summer, we unpacked this work plan with our schools, and then they use this to build their school work plans and identify where they are as a school. and then they use this to build their school work plans and identify where they are as a school and where they want to go next as a school. And it really helps us take immediate action before we can really build and flesh out our strategic plan. So I'll have an update next week on strategic plan, where we are and what the next steps are with that. And this is, we've got to keep the work going and we really need to keep the work going focused on teaching and learning. So this work plan helps us move forward with those next steps and so we're not missing a beat. So you might ask, how was the work plan created? So we started reviewing last year's work plan. We reviewed the student data, observation data, we looked at survey data and talked about what did we accomplish, what didn't we get to? And then started to do some collaborative input meetings with our EL team and then some feedback loops with the principals to make sure we understood what they needed to lead the work at their schools. So we were very intentional when I met with them last year to say, here's what we're looking at in this section of the work plan. If we are going to move here, what do you need Central Office to do to support you to do that work? So what's in our work plan? So we focus on the three dimensions of student achievement. And all of those three dimensions are captured within parts of our Portrait of a Scholar. So our Portrait of a Scholar is helping us move towards identifying areas of growth as it relates to character, mastery of knowledge and skills and high-quality work, and then what we need to do to move those forward. It also provides us with a clear theory of action, who is going to do what, who's responsible for what? And identifies the research-based strategies that we're going to implement and monitor. We'll implement and monitor these. We may be doing walkthroughs and observations. We'll be looking at student data. As you do observation walkthroughs, see how many students are engaged? Are our students accessing the curriculum like we'd want them to? And then we're also, they identify what are our outcome goals for students? What are the process measures we're going to keep track of? And what is our overall scope of work for the school year? So we do have a multi-impact goal that's established. And it's really important to know that we've, and this is one thing that came out of strategic planning, Phase 1, is that we really need all to mean all. And when we review some data with staff and when I review some of our data with the board and what we've seen historically is all doesn't mean all in Nashville City Schools. And we need all to mean all, which means we need to look at our data and provide differentiated supports for students based on what they need so that every single student can be attaining the educational outcomes equitably. So as we look at the work plan, like I said, it's organized into three, the three dimensions of student achievement, the first being character. So our work are related to characters. We're going to continue and deepen our implementation of staff crew. We are rolling out student crew district-wide. And our crew, just so you know, really serves as our dedicated social emotional learning time for our students. And then our curriculum and instruction and Tanya, not, I'm sorry, Tanya, Tima have been instrumental in working and supporting our schools in the development of what their crew lessons will be. High school and middle school have a curriculum already developed, so they're looking at those, adapting it to make it fit for what they need. And the elementaries have some pre-created social emotional learning curriculums that they've used and so they're helping make sure those fit into the crew structure. So the goals we have in character, students will name and explain their school's habits of scholarship or habits of character and that they will increase the percentage of adults and students that report they have a feeling of belonging. And you may be wondering, what are habits of scholarship? Habits of scholarship come back to what are on our portraits of a scholar. So we want our students to not just perform well academically. We want them to be able to share and communicate, well, this is why I know I can do well academically. I have good study habits. I have, you know, I'm caring and compassionate. So it's more than just, we want our students to do well on assessments. We want our students to be good people. The second dimension is mastery of knowledge and skills. And this is really like, hey, we want our kids to, to do well on, on their work. We want them to succeed academically and academically at high levels. So our focus here will be working to identify effective instructional practices. What does a culture of engagement and excellence look like in a classroom? And when we talk about excellence, this is excellence for every student, not excellence for the student that comes in, always turns in their work, always listens, always follows directions. We want every student to have that opportunity for excellence in the classroom. So this is a focus on what does that engagement and excellence look like across the board for every student? So our goal here is that all students will meet or exceed growth in all of our students' groups. We'll measure those by the assessments that we give throughout the school year and holding some teacher and focus groups. The third dimension focuses on high-quality student work. This is one we'll just start introducing this year. And the focus on this is that we need to build a foundation with our district leaders, with our staff, with our teachers across the district. This is a new kind of dimension to get into for how we look and monitor student achievement. So this year will be some professional development for school leaders and teachers and staff to start understanding what does this look like? And that our goal has been by May 2028, 100% of our students will produce work that is complex, well-crafted, and authentic. So high-quality student work moves our students from just turning in an assignment and doing the bare minimum to really putting their whole effort into it, really taking time to make sure that it is done, it is done well, and that they are creating really authentic and meaningful work. And a lot of this then comes back to our staff with formative assessment and feedback to make sure that our students really understand, well, here's how I can take this up to the next level. That is just a quick overview of the work plan for this year. So if there were any particular questions or curiosities, discuss those now.
Yep, board members, comments or feedback for Maggie?
I know you, you went through, you went a little bit quick. Do you say this is going to be school level or going to be district level?
So this is, this is the district work plan. So this is for myself, my team, and how we're going to support schools to help the principals lead the work in their buildings. And then the schools took our district plan and then said, okay, if this is the supports we're getting from the district, here's the goals where we're heading, the goals are the same. Here's what we need to do at the school level to move this work forward. So they built their school plans off of the district plan.
And everyone's going to be doing the same thing by using the same? And who's going to monitor all of this? Is this going to be where-
This is monitored by curriculum and instruction, monitored by me. I've already set up my monthly visits to each school with, with, already set the agendas on here's what we're going to be looking at for your school work plan when I come for my observations, whether it's looking at your student crew, whether it's coming to a PLC. So it's already been outlined, so I can make sure we're using an accountability cycle with all of our schools.
Are you going to grade the schools as you go through this? Or how are you going to be able to really see it happen within the school? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Oh yeah, no, a couple of things. So we'll have a beginning of the year, a mid-year, and an end of the year. Well, we're, we're not going to get graded, but we're going to say you're making progress, you've exceeded progress. We're not going to say you, you get an A, B, C, or D. That's not how this really works. It's are you doing the leadership moves to help increase student achievement and along all of these three domains?
Others? Feedback for Maggie? Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
A lot of work.
So, board members, we are coming up on the last item on the agenda before we go into closed session and it's policies. And there's a lot on here. Some of the policy discussion we have will be like normal, but some of these policies will be policies where it would be appropriate for us to have the input of legal counsel. And so some of these will be discussed in closed session as well. So just wanted you to know that as we turn to that on our agenda.
Okay. So the only policy that does not pertain to Title IX is Policy Code 3620, Extracurricular Activities and Student Organization. And there is a change in there in addition about NIL agreements. And that's in a footnote reference change. That's really the only one that doesn't pertain to Title IX. And so I'm going to kindly hand over all of the Title IX policies to Anna so that she can explain to you why we are, we changed and now that we're going back.
Thanks, Kim. So these changes, I'm sure you guys remember, we went through the whole saga of the 2024 regulations, which came out, were then challenged, were then struck down by a court. And after they were struck, they have been completely struck down now, not just the preliminary injunction that we were initially dealing with. So these changes come from us and NCSBA in an effort to comply with those overturned 2024 regulations. Following the overturn of those regulations, the Department of Education provided guidance that districts should follow the 2020 regulations that were previously in place. Since that was the recommendation, NCSBA recommended that districts return to the policies that were in place prior to the 2024 changes. That's what's been brought before you now. Most of these changes are procedural in nature. They address how we handle these complaints. However, obviously, a piece of concern is the lack of stated protection on the basis of gender identity and the definition of on the basis of sex. So just as a point of clarity on this, the change in policies that's recommended doesn't change the Fourth Circuit ruling in the Grimm case, which does say that discrimination on the basis of gender identity constitutes discrimination on the basis of sex under Title IX. And so as a North Carolina district, we are obligated to follow that case law. So just to kind of provide some clarity on this, whether that, because a lot of what is happening with these policies, one of the big removals that I figured caught y'all's eye was the removal of that parenthetical defining on the basis of sex. But whether that parenthetical is there defining it or not, that case law still stands. So I just wanted to go ahead and kind of provide y'all with that information upfront. But I'm happy to discuss questions or concerns or anything that y'all have regarding these changes.
And Anna, tell me what you, tell me what you want to tell me. These are in front of us on first read. You've given us the context. We may have need for legal advice on some of these. So if it, if it is the case that some of these are not going to move forward on first read, what, remind us of our timing of this, like what are our options as a board?
Sure. I mean, so at this point, DOE has said we should be following the 2020 regulations. However, the standard for Title IX is we can't be deliberately indifferent to issues of sexual discrimination or harassment. So with our policies in place, we wouldn't be defying that issue timeline-wise. Timeline-wise, otherwise, I mean, it is important that we kind of go ahead and get this moving because that has been in place. It's, it's not one of those things where I think, you know, we need these to be voted on tonight for approval. We can certainly take time and be very intentional with this and have more discussion than we may with other policies that don't require as much. That's certainly doable. But I do think it's important to keep it moving.
Understood.
I mean, not, not to say you guys need to put it on for like second read next week. That's not what I'm trying to say. But yes, but to just keep it moving forward and keep it a part of the discussions for the next little-
Thank you. I think what I want to offer to the board procedurally, and then I'm happy for you all to have comments and questions like normal. 3620 Extracurricular Activities, does anyone have any issue with that going on the consent agenda next week? And I'm sorry, is that how it would, we'd be moving it forward, whatever the words are that I need to say about that. So I'm going to set that one aside. But for the rest of these, what would you all like to do? Do you have questions that we should discuss now with these policies?
What about 6220?
6220 has a Title IX update as well.
It's, sorry, go ahead.
And some of these, like when, when you, there's more changes in some of these. And then you're going to see that once you have either, however you've decided to move forward with the ones that have substantial changes, it really just triggers some cross-reference changes once those bigger bulky ones are approved. Some of the information only, like 1760, 2500, those are just, there's just cross-references to the other policies that have been approved. So it, it looks more massive than it might be.
So for example, the 6220 change is the removal of that parenthetical that I mentioned before. And so that's kind of, to Kim's point, the larger, more substantial changes than have this smaller change throughout the manual. And also because like, for example, there was a policy specifically adopted for the 2024 regulations related to the procedures for how we handle these grievances. But under the 2020, they're handled through a different policy. So it's changing the policy that was adopted for 2024 for handling the procedures back to the one that was under 2020 for handling grievances.
Is it?
George was up, so I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. Is it possible to retain the language within procedures?
Within the procedures? Like the, like the procedures related to the policies? I would need to take a deeper look at it. I think there's not an issue though, because I think our Title IX policies are separate from the procedures that we have related to like gender support guidelines and some of those other issues that, like that we use to address like the Parents' Bill of Rights and things. Those were kind of separate from the Title IX changes. And so I, off the top of my head, I think it would be possible, but I would want to double-check if there are any changes we need for consistency purposes.
Okay. Thank you.
But we wouldn't, that would be left to the superintendent and her designee?
Yes, for procedural.
But I, I like your thinking.
Yes.
So I'm a little, I'm, I'm getting wrapped up in legal ease that I'm having a hard time deciphering. So I'm just going to give you a hypothetical. We have a trans kid at our schools. All of this, all of this change, how does that change that trans kid's life based on these policies?
Well, so that was kind of what I was alluding to with the Gavin Grimm case. It is the law in North Carolina and everywhere in the Fourth Circuit that you cannot discriminate on the basis of somebody's gender identity under Title IX. So they still could not be exposed to discrimination on the basis of their gender identity under North Carolina and Fourth Circuit law. That, of course, case law is up in the air and the Supreme Court has accepted some cases to address this issue. So it is a changing area of law right now, but the changes in these policies would not change that protection.
Thank you.
I have a question about 1725 and whatnot after that, 40357236. There are a lot of definitions that are added in this one that include, you know, dating violence, domestic violence, sexual assault. Those aren't, are those related to Title IX?
Yes.
So this is how it used to be?
This is how they were defined under the 2020 regulations. They used the cross-references from the FBI and things like that for defining them.
So before, we had it where there was, we just said sexual assault and we didn't define it, I guess?
Yes.
And now we have to define these things? Okay, I was just trying to understand the patients of this.
Yeah, the Department of Education had put out guidance that was like hundreds of pages long on all of the definitions on these things, following the 2020 rules. And the, these were part of that. So they came from that guidance.
And the 20, the 2024 guidance, did it omit all of that? Did it just get rid of all those definitions?
I'll be honest, I'm not positive.
I mean, because the definitions, I, I want to say this with the caveat that I read through them quickly. But if they're used by the FBI, I'm not sure that they're like bad definitions. Anyway, I'm just, I'm looking for like what's wrong with this and I'm, I'm seeing it be pretty specific in ways that, that could be helpful as opposed to sexual assault. So I was just curious about where that- So I was just curious about where that was coming from. All right, thank you.
And I will, since you brought up 1725, I will tell you that we, our firm does have a couple of like minor recommended changes as well to 1725 and 1726. The 1725 is just sort of clarifying in D5 that placing an employee on leave during a Title IX investigation or grievance isn't an emergency removal. So, which, and I apologize to your staff, I would have brought this up to you before, but I was gone last week and didn't have a chance to review it ahead of time. 1726, we also have recommended removing Section E1. That includes an opportunity to request a hearing as part of the grievance process because that's not a required step with the Title IX regulations. Those were the recommendations Campbell Shatley put forward in 2020, and so we've just recommended that moving back to the 2020 policies, we do that change again.
One more question on 1510, I believe that was. One of the, there aren't a lot of changes on this one as far as I can tell, but there was a change from DPI being the, I don't even know the word, from DPI to the Center for Safer Schools. It's on page three of seven. Anybody know what the Center for Safer Schools is?
Yes, yes.
I don't. So can you clarify?
So the Center for Safer Schools was established by the General Assembly to provide additional support and guidance for school safety issues. They've put out training videos that school districts are required to show students about, for each different age group, about, you know, like the dangers of things like grooming or signs to look out for to protect themselves from issues of that nature. They've also put out guidance regarding some of these more specific things that are in here about school shootings and things of that nature as well, like mass threats. So the Center for Safer Schools has kind of been charged as the overseer for all of the school safety concerns.
It also has moved from DPI to SBI.
Thank you.
So it is no longer underneath the Department of Instruction. Public instruction is also, our anonymous tip line is a mandate, for example, threat assessments on when a child poses a threat or anyone else. There's a protocol that we work together on to respond quickly to. So we're actually, we feel very confident that we are in good shape as a district and we have some strong infrastructures in place to respond to this.
Okay.
We knew it was coming.
Great, thank you.
1725 or 1726. So as we take time, I'm, I'm not forestalling further questions, but I'm under the impression that we will probably want to live into these a bit more and read on these before we're ready to do something about them. But I would just encourage you to look at some of the heftier ones first. A thought. Okay, Pappy.
Looking at 1710, et cetera, there are sections that say fill in before adopting this policy. Is, are we able to direct the superintendent to fill those in? Is that an option in passing the policy?
So those were filled in today, and Lisa can add those back, send those to Kim Jones to add back up, to add, to re, to upload to Diligent. So the 504 coordinator would be Holly Sutter. The ADA coordinator is Holly Sutter. The age discrimination coordinator would be Dr. Dickerson. And the coordinator for non-discrimination laws would be Dr. Dickerson as well. And we've made those internal adjustments, and then we can get those to you.
Anything else on policies for first read, board members for this evening, or the information-only policies?
May I ask?
Yes, Rebecca.
With what Anna shared about further recommendations, do these stay on first read till we get Campbell Shatley's strikes, or do we do that on second?
So either way, Rebecca, y'all can move it forward and have those changes added for second read, or if you guys aren't prepared at this time to move forward to second read, given that there are a lot of policies and a lot of substantial changes, we can add those and put it back on for first read, either way.
Do we have to decide right now? Can we wait for any information that we? I don't want to speak for the board. I'm not hearing a groundswell of movement that we're ready to move forward.
We could, I think I would handle it when we set the next agenda.
Yeah.
Um, is, I'm just wondering what the pivot is in 1725? Like, what is the big shift other than just moving a bunch of words around?
I mean, a lot of additions and things regarding the conduct, as well as a lot of removals. The consent to the procedure processes in there. I do think 1720 contains a lot of changes as well, more so maybe than 1725, but those are kind of the big ones for 1725.
Thank you.
And on the ones on 1720, you're right, like there's a whole lot of changes on 1720, mostly procedural, as far as I can tell. These were, these are changes that are the result of those different Title IX guidances, is that right?
Yes.
And it, and it does seem mostly directed at, at training and notice and things like that. I mean, I don't actually see that much in any of these that is very substantive, except for the one parenthetical, which is a hammer to lots of us. And as you say, for the moment, the Fourth Circuit's decision saves us, which it won't long-term. And I guess we will need to ask at another time your advice on whether these are really, how compulsory these are, that parenthetical. I mean, aside from that, I will just say that like my own little review of this is there's not that much here that's, I mean, you tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't see that much that changes a lot aside from procedure. Procedure matters, due process matters for sure. I don't want to understate the importance of those things. And at the same time, what I care more about is substantive rights that are, anyway.
So. No, I agree. I mean, the biggest things in the procedural changes from 2020 to 2024 was that in the 2024 versions, it further defined sort of the informal processes available, whereas the 2020 versions didn't provide as much guidance on the informal processes available to address these complaints. But as for sort of the, the procedure for handling formal complaints, it's really not that big of a difference between the two. Mostly it is related more to training and documentation things than.
And it does seem to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, Anna, that apropos to what Liza suggested, things like training and notice can be dealt with through procedure. We could establish procedures that require that our employees be trained on sexual harassment and sex discrimination, and right now, those are defined in North Carolina to include gender identity. So I feel like some of these excisions can be dealt with through procedure. If we, if the superintendent decides to do that.
Okay, folks, thank you very much for all of that. I believe we are at the end of our open session. A couple of things, if I might. We do have closed session. Because we need to take action, we will come out of closed session tonight, back to open session. So that is still coming. I draw your attention to the announcements in the agenda. First day of school, next meetings, early dismissal days. And I know some board members have some reasons they need to leave at a certain time tonight, so could we take a three-minute break? I think, folks, if you could do that. Is there, apologies, let me read this. Could I have a motion for our board to enter into a closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-31811 for the following purposes? Under subsection A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged and confidential personnel information pursuant to General Statute 115C, 319 through 321, and under subsection A3, to discuss matters protected by the attorney-client privilege.
I move that we go into closed sessions for the reasons stated by Chair Thornburg.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The first part of the meeting is concluded. The first part of the meeting is concluded. ...